I can't believe I'm inclined to quote Cory Booker. It's just not usually my style. I'm not gonna do it right now. I can only probably do it once in my life. I don't wanna have a Spartacus moment. Save it for the meeting. See what else we have here.
Good afternoon, I'll just check in to see if my audio is working.
Sounds good here.
Five by five.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Artis sounds good. Hi Mark.
Am I working?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes. Alright. It is three o'clock, Thursday 29th October 2020. Special call for City Council of Marathon via Zoom. I call to order. Would you all rise and recite with the Vice Mayor, the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here before the roll call. If I could get Mr. Lewis to read the prescribed paragraphs.
Thank you Mayor. Members of the public wish to comment on matters before the City Council may do so by calling And upon receiving a voice prompt, dial meeting ID code 841-6184-3221 and the password 853872. Members of the public who want to participate need to have the option to mute themselves upon entering the meeting, sorry about that. It's star six to mute and star six to unmute. And then to raise your hand so that we can call on you is a star nine. Thank you.
Very good sir, thank you Mr. Lewis. Ms. Clavier, would you call the roll please?
Councilmember Bartis?
Here.
Councilmember Sam Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Zake? Councilmember Zake?
President.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez?
Here.
Mayor Cook?
President. Thank you very much. We have a quorum and today's agenda is a discussion regarding an interim city manager. I was going to speak first, but I'm gonna wait and let everybody have a moment to speak and if we keep the, keep motions down until we all have a chance, that'd be great. Who'd like to go first?
Mr. Mayor? I would like to go.
Vice Mayor?
Yes sir. First of all, I'd like to start off by saying, I'd like to start off by saying good afternoon to everyone. And I definitely would be remiss if I wouldn't say thank you to Chuck Lindsay for his efforts as our city manager. He was a great manager and we were lucky to have him particularly during and after Hurricane Irma. He will be greatly missed. The one thing that I liked most about Chuck's time as manager was the stability that he brought. He is a strong presence and because he lives in Marathon, he lived in Marathon prior to becoming the city manager. He provided that sense of continuity. He may have been from somewhere else originally, but he loved Marathon. And we all knew that Chuck loved his town. Now that we're considering replacing him and we understand that his shoes are very hard to fill. I believe that a sense of continuity is very, very important as we go forward. The city of Marathon has done a wonderful job building itself up and achieving goals that were set when we incorporated. We are independent and we are financially stable. And when we act, when many municipalities hesitate. This is a very proactive approach. And we as a council have an obligation to maintain this proactive approach. Of course, there's adjustments that need to be made. And there's always opportunity for adjustments when change happens. But we do not need to lose the momentum that we have built over the last 20 years. We have done that to ourselves in the past when we have hired managers that have come from elsewhere. And they immediately try to mark their territory. And I don't wanna see that happen. You know, a new manager shouldn't have to reestablish relationships. A manager that comes in shouldn't squander our hard-earned credibility. I wanna see several things from our next manager. I wanna see continuity, I wanna see expertise. I want someone with local knowledge of the Florida Keys and Marathon. Someone who understands the complex relationships, not only with the county and the state, but the federal government. And I want someone that we all trust has the best interest of Marathon at heart. You know, and I've tossed this around and to me, we have a person currently in the building that fits that description. He knows the city well. He knows it as well as anyone and he loves the city as much as anyone. He knows the players that we must deal with on a daily basis locally and at a state level. And personally, he has been working with these folks for years. He has a good feel for the city staff. And for me right now, there cannot be a better fit for city manager. So I'm gonna go ahead and talk a little bit on the highlights of the person that I'm talking about and that person is Mr. George Garrett. You know, George is a 35-year resident of Monroe County. He has spent 22 years, the first 22 years he spent working for Monroe County. And during that time at Monroe County, he developed, he helped develop the wastewater master plan, which at the time included the city of Marathon with before incorporation. His last 13 years, we have been fortunate enough that he has been an incredible employee for the city of Marathon. During those 13 years, he has helped navigate with the team through multiple hurricanes. He has held the title of city biologist, planning director, floodplain manager. And he's also served as deputy manager for two city managers. Mike Pewter and Chuck Lindsay. He is community involved. He sits on the Water Quality Protection Program Steering Committee. He's a chairperson for Florida Keys National Marine Sanctuary Advisory Council. He's a board member for Leadership Monroe. He's a chairperson at Crane Point Hammock. He's a past chairperson of the Rotary Club of Marathon. He's on the advisory board council for Moat Marine, representing Monroe County. You know, council, at this point, I think that George deserves an opportunity. And I'll go ahead and, you know, honor your request to hold out on making a nomination to see what the rest of the council has to say. Thank you.
Who's next? You're welcome Vice Mayor. Anyone?
Oh.
I'll chime back. Hey. Can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Thank you. Look, I think what Vice Mayor said is on point, to be honest. You know, somebody who has the experience and the knowledge to be, you know, that's been here, that understands our situation, I think is a, is a great idea. You know, the only reason we got lucky with Chuck is because he had been here before and knew what to expect. A lot of people coming from other places, they don't know what to expect. They, you know, come down with, you know, delusions of fishing all day and part-time city manager job in the afternoon. And that's not what we need. So I do agree with the continued continuity of management and understanding of our city. And I'm, I think I'm in favor of keeping George Garrett as the city manager as well.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Doc, you seem to be unmuted. Mr. Bartis?
Thank you sir. You know, Louis just said a lot of things that I was probably going to say. So Mr. Vice Mayor, you made my little spiel a lot shorter. But having been through this more than a few times with different managerial searches, there's like two firms out there that specialize in searches for city managers. We have used one of them in the past. And I'm not gonna say the results we got were stellar, but one time we did a city manager search. We, you know, spent the money to fly people in and interview them and do all that. And we ended up hiring the local guy. So I also have grown to very much respect George Garrett. The city had just incorporated and George was still working for Monroe County. He did the city a lot of favors in terms of helping us with Booty Harbor, the harbor management and helping us secure some financing and resources and trying to do what we needed to do in Booty Harbor. George has been a friend of the city for a long time and you know, the whole idea of moving forward and having that continuity that we've established there, I think is very important. That being said, I'm going to say that if whoever we have, whoever we decide on as Marathon's city manager, some things I would like to see happen, first off, since we're doing monthly meetings, I want, I wanna make sure that we hear reports from all of our department heads at each of those monthly meetings. So we keep a good idea. And it's gonna be up to us five council members to exercise the oversight necessary for our manager. And of course, our attorney, hi Steve, nice to see you. But this is our job, we're the policymakers for the city and we're the ones that exercise that oversight. And the bulk of ultimately does stop with us. So I do support George and I would like to see us move forward with that continuity. And one thing too, and I talked about this with George earlier today. You know, he has been our city's planner for quite a while, or planning director. And he's done a good job with that and maybe he'll address this in a little bit. But you know, how do we keep the continuity going in the planning department? How do we make sure that those responsibilities are going to be met? And how do we move forward there? And the other thing is if say, at some point in the future, George, if he is end up named manager and decides after a little while that, you know, he would rather go back to planning director, I don't wanna see that avenue closed on him. So, you know, let's just, I support George as manager for all the reasons that have already been spoken. And I think we should move forward with that. That's probably all I'm gonna say at this point too.
Mr. Mayor?
Doc?
I would like to take a moment and say thank you to Louis, our Vice Mayor, in expressing all the gratitude for all the efforts that Chuck Lindsay has put out over the last several years. Indeed, he worked extremely hard and we were very lucky to have him during the course of Irma, before, during, and of course after. But council members, I have to stop there. Because this rush to put George Garrett in place as city manager just simply does not pass the sniff test. It smacks of a backroom deal with self-interest that have been made before this meeting today. And that the self-interest is the primary goal. And it reminds me of the old Marathon. I thought we had moved forward out of the mud and into the sunshine. But I feel this is a step to move backwards and I disagree with it. And if George Garrett is half the man that you're trying to sell to all the residents of Marathon, then he would recognize that this maneuver is simply that. And he would request the job be posted by our city attorney and put his resume into the mix with all the others and let the best man win.
Thank you councilman. Alright, so apparently I am not going to be the, sorry? Alright, so I am going to pre-apologize to my fellow council members and to Mr. Garrett. Because things that I'm gonna say may sound personal, they are not. But this meeting was called for the purpose of naming an interim city manager. It now appears, as stated previously, as if a secret backroom deal has been made. If you go forward with this, on this path, without a search, the members of this council should be ashamed. No matter what it is. George, I like you, I love you as a and this is my opinion, way, and shared by others, way too much on your plate to also deal with staff on a daily basis, intergovernmental affairs with Monroe County, Tallahassee, and Washington DC. You were previously removed as the deputy city manager for most of these, most of these reasons, for being too busy. One of the things that the city, that the Vice Mayor mentioned, he mentioned a slew of committees and things that you're on and that you deal with on a daily, weekly certain that that plays into this either. Surely you can see that people are using you to return we currently have a former city manager or soon to be former city manager. Mr. Williams will do what is necessary and proper as per our charter to form a committee and engage in a nationwide search for a qualified candidate. George, I offer for you to put your name in the hat and be excited about competing against the outsiders. But please, let's do this right. Let's do it above board and beyond reproach. This must be public and transparent in the eyes of our peers and most importantly, our community. So with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Anyone?
Yes sir.
I'm not sure who that was.
It's me, Louis.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Again, I'm gonna stick to, I, I'm sorry, I disagree. I feel that we have running and we don't have time to wait. Therefore, I'm gonna go ahead and put this in a form of a motion. Motion.
We lost the audio there.
I'm motioning that we hire George Garrett as our next city manager.
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
One second, let me fix this. Can you hear me? Hello?
Better.
I'm sorry that I disagree. And I'm gonna go ahead and forward and make next city manager.
I apologize.
Sorry, I did not get that.
I'm sorry, didn't hear your motion.
Motion is to hire George Garrett as our next city manager.
Did you get that, Madam Clark? To be clear.
Yes, I did, to hire George Garrett as our next city manager.
To be clear, this is not for interim, this is for next.
Correct. Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Second. Alright, we have a motion. We have a second, Vice Mayor and Sam Martin.
A little discussion to Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, your screen is frozen for me, so I can't tell when you're, if you see me or not, sorry. So what I would like to see, and I'll be quite honest, is some continuing education in the position as well. So if we are gonna do this with George, there are educational things that are, I'm gonna call them city manager school type programs that he could attend and pick up some of the skills that would be helpful to him as a city manager. He already has a huge knowledge of, you know, the local code and the city and all of that. I think it would complement and, and I would also like to see reviews. I'd like to see possibly a six-month, definitely a one-year review of how well he is performing in the position. And that's just what I would like to see.
Would you like me to call the roll?
Great.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
So we have a motion. Just call the roll.
Before we, just before we do a roll call here, do we have, maybe we should ask if there's anybody from the public that does want to weigh in on this?
Well, that's, that's a very good comment. Mr. Lewis? Mr. Lewis, is there anyone on Zoom or on a telephone call or in the city hall that wishes to speak on this subject?
No one has their hand raised at this time. I see no one that is requesting to to speak. But while I'm on here, if anybody wants to request, please star nine to raise your hand. Okay, we do have one last. Can you, have you got me? The last four digits of their phone is four, one, three.
That's could that be
Hello?
Can you state your name?
Sounds like Diane Scott.
Yeah.
Is it, can you state your name for the record?
Go ahead.
Yes, Diane Scott, Marathon, Florida.
Please go ahead, Diane.
Oh, okay. All right. I just want to say that I agree. I was calling in to talk about the duel in Florida. If you had heard the city attorney, because it's against the Florida Constitution. So I just want to say sometimes outside of this. But I agree. I agree with what Tom and Sam said, that, you know, we, if you elect George Garrett, that you do some educational stuff and and check in on him every once in a while. I agree, you know, I agree with this and we just want to do what's best for Marathon. And I'm always talking about Marathon. And so I, you know, I'm just keeping an eye on all of you, you know. So I think that George Garrett would be a perfect fit. But you know what? I need all of you all to pay attention and when I call you all to call me back. But I agree with you all. I agree that George Garrett should be the city manager. I really do. And as far as you all come, like you need to go and and do a search. Sometimes you don't need to do a search. You just need to do what's best for us in Marathon. You need to do what's best for Marathon. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
You're welcome.
Since everybody wants to speak before we take the vote, do we have any other callers? Maybe we ought to even hear Mr. Garrett.
Thank you, council.
Mr. Garrett, you going to say anything?
I appreciate the honor given to me and I will, in in this recommendation. Certainly always had this in my mind. It's not necessarily what I had sought at this moment. Chuck Lindsay has been an amazing city manager. Having said that, with his resignation, I have definitely committed my time and willingness to do this. And have at least laid out in my own mind, which I I would certainly be willing to share with all of you. Some adjustments that I would suggest making in order for me to be able to accomplish this. And with that, I just simply appreciate the council and and its consideration. It's it's an honor, honestly, and thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Garrett. With that, we have a second.
Mr. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, point of order. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just as a point of order on this discussion here. Instead of the motion that would automatically hire him as of right now without any sort of contract. Perhaps I would suggest the motion be reworded to suggest that we enter into negotiations with the intent to hire George Garrett as a city manager. And then we work, have our our attorney work with him on a contract for that purpose. And the contract to become, but come back and ratified at a at a at a future council meeting, perhaps the next one.
That's a very wise rec. Would the motion maker be inclined to go that route?
Yes.
Vice Mayor. Ms. Clavier, did you get that?
Yes, I did. I will go ahead and call the roll.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you for your point of order.
Just one more point of order here. Did we do, did the gentleman, Mr. Sam Martin, who seconded that?
With the amended motion correctly?
Yes, correct. I'd like to hear the motion.
Mr. Martin, do you second?
We will come back at the next meeting with a ratified contract that the city man, city attorney will negotiate with George Garrett.
And that's your motion, Mr. Vice Mayor?
That's my second as well.
Okay. Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Vice Mayor, you can't be heard.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Sam Martin.
Yes.
Councilmember Bardis.
Yes.
Councilmember Zigg.
No.
Mayor Cook.
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Motion carries and we will reconvene this in week and a half, I suppose. Thank you all. Thank you all for who are on this call. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for putting it together. Thanks to city staff. I don't know if anybody has anything else they'd like to say. All right. If hearing nothing, this man is adjourned.